All right, please silence your devices, we're about to get started. All right, so at six o'clock, I call this meeting of the Saginaw City Council to order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. Item 1C is the invocation. Reverend, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to say a word of thanksgiving for each of you. In each of your own ways, you are the very best of our community and I'm grateful for each of you. So, thank you for your service and would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, we come before you in this season of thanks, as has been called before, the season that should never end. And Father, I pray that out of the overflow of our hearts gratitude would be expressed to one another, to our families, to our neighbors, that it would invade this community in such a way, this thanksgiving, that it would truly transform the hearts of each person in Saginaw and in this corridor of Fort Worth. Thank you, Father, that this hall represents a place where plans are developed, strategies are put into place, and wisdom is required. And so, I pray over this council and each, each person that is sacrificial in their service to every one of our neighbors in this community. I pray your blessing on them and we give thanks, Father, for this opportunity and this season to be together as we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Reverend. Wise words. D is audience participation, that's covered on the screen. Anyone wishing to speak on an item, please see the, there's a list over there by the chief. If you want to speak on a public hearing, you don't need to fill out a form, I will call for folks to approach at the proper time. Okay, moving on, consent and agenda. I've had a request to pull 2E, so we will cover all the others. 2A, action regarding minutes from November 4th. 2B, action regarding cancellation of January 6 council meeting. 2C, action regarding individual product order payment management program. 2D, action regarding individual product order blue mound road beautification. And that is it, so A, B, C, and D. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make motion, we approve items, consent agenda items 2A, B, C, and D as read.
Brack, just a little second. Please cast your votes. Motion passed, let the record reflect, we have a quorum, a full house, thanks for coming, folks. So, we will go to 2E and throw that to Pedro, Director of Ag Notic Development and Community Engagement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The reason why this item was pulled, because there's been some language that's changed since the packet's been released. So, I'm just going to read off what's changing. So, this is the driveway between Chicken Express and the Einstein Brothers. That was a requested item from council from the 380 agreement. The original said, "This drive shall be installed per the city's standard detailed specifications and build requirements." That is being replaced with, "The drive shall be installed matching the existing fire lane paving at seven inch, four thousand PSI reinforced concrete pavement with four bars, number four bars at eighteen inch on center each way over compacted subgrade." I'm not an engineer or a builder, so I have no idea what that means. So, we consulted and fire engineering and Randy have said this is a standard that's there for fire lanes and for the fire drive, that driveway that we're requiring. So, that's the only language that's changed.
All right, any questions for Pedro on this, folks?
Does the fire police department have any issues with this?
Oh, no, we prefer it.
Okay.
T, Hugh. You're good?
No, I'm saying we don't have any issues with it at all.
Excellent, okay. Any other questions, folks? If not, we'll entertain a motion for 2E.
Mayor, I make motion, we approve consent agenda item 2E.
I'll second.
Valerie, second. Motion passes, excellent. Let's get that moving. Three, recogni- recogni- recognitions, presentations. Gabe?
No recognitions tonight, just want to mention briefly, we had a EGRET and Coyote, how should we say, maybe management meeting last night, was unable to attend. Some of our council members I know attended. It was such a raucous good time that there's a part two being scheduled for January. So, in words of former Dallas Cowboy, Terrell Owens, get your popcorn ready.
I would like to say that, was very impressed, the animal committee, the board that did it, Jose and his team deserves accolades for that. Very, very well put on, very good information.
Excellent. Thank you, Nick. Excellent. Anything else, recognitions? All right, let's move forward. 3B, presentation regarding waste connections recycling options. Welcome Abel Moreno.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. My name is Abel Moreno, North Texas Municipal Manager for Waste Connections. Along with me is Zach McPherson, District Manager over Waste Connections. Tonight, we're going to talk about trash. I know, in the past year, we've, we've had a lot of discussion on potentially upgrading the recycle bins to a larger recycling cart. Well, your current contract, which was extended last year for two years, will be up in 2026, November. This would be a good time to really explore other avenues, not just with recycling, but also with your trash to implement. Let's go for another contract of ten years. The City of Fayette, just last night, extended three years. Some of the other cities on here, notable Halton City and the City of Crowley, we did transition those teen drivers in the City of Saginaw, fourteen helpers, four local customer service specialists, three local dispatchers, line of business specific, and six diesel technicians, along with three route supervisors. Big part of what we do is, we're a big partner with the City of Saginaw, as so many other cities. Every year, we participate in the trunk or treat. We're, we're big donators to the training grain festival, as well as, that's a picture of me having a good time at the grand opening for your, for your new library and senior center. So, with that said, I'll, I'll talk about the future, talk a little bit about AI and what we're looking to add. There's a program called MapGears and we would like to initiate this program with the new contract. MapGears, what it does is really allows real-time notification. As you know, with companies like Amazon, UPS, you can get on their app, you can find out, you can get ETAs on when your packages are coming. We'd like to do that with the trash. That's something we can incorporate. Along those same lines, with, with AI and the cameras, we can start looking at businesses and, and really just identifying businesses that have overflow. And we, and we can get and communicate with those businesses and say, hey, look, this is becoming repetitive, we'd like to right-size your dumpster and just make sure you're utilizing your dumpster properly. If you need extra frequency, if you need a larger dumpster, these are your options. And with the city's permission, if, if it, nothing changes, we could initiate a penalty or a fine. Now, this is not to nickel and dime a business, this is really just to get them to make sure they're, they're staying clean and, and responsible.
Who would get the fine? Who would get the money for the fine? Would it be the city or would it be you?
It would be us.
Okay.
But, again, the point would not be to fine the business. We wouldn't do that in the beginning. We would show, we would meet with the business and say, hey, look, th- this is the issue. We really need you to increase your frequency or, or get a bigger dumpster. And with, alongside with the city, we would talk about when would be a good time to, to do a fine, or even if we even initiate a fine. Maybe that's not something that, that the city's on board with. But, it, it would be a way to clean the city. I'll, I'll hand it over to your current service, to Zach McPherson.
As Abel mentioned, my name is Zach McPherson. I stepped into the DM role about April, as Abel stepped into the municipal marketing manager role. I think you guys by now have all figured out how, how well Abel maintains relationships with cities and it does us a great service to have him in that role. So, kind of looking at our current service, what you guys have right now is obviously a rearload take-all. Some of the issues we see with that, a lot of it is curb appeal, right? You have customers with either no container, mismatched containers, can lead to animals getting into trash, spreading stuff around. It can lead to the city being dirty, right? Additional problems that can be mitigated through going to carded service. Big issue we face is, a lot of the carts and containers customers have, don't have the catch bars on them, right? So, the back of that truck has a tipper on it, it's got a hook designed to grab a bar on our industrial containers where the guys aren't physically lifting them into the truck. With that, there's, there's a safety risk, right? We've serviced bags, not in containers, we have guys lifting heavy containers. I think this year alone, if you look at just grabbing bags as far as service, we've had eight guys either stuck by needles, sharp objects, something of that nature to where they had to seek medical attention to get blood testing, whatever, maybe get stitches. So, there's a lot that goes into us wanting to transition to the carts. It's, it's really unproductive. It is hard to not only find people to do it, but it's hard to find people that are, are willing and capable of servicing at a level that we expect and you guys expect. There's still a place for rearload, right? You can see the back of the truck in the picture, it's this big giant hole, right? It, it's designed for bulky service, it's designed for chairs and stuff like that, right? It's very hard to utilize in everyday service that's beneficial for, for us as a company and you guys as a city. So, some example set outs, some of these are from Saginaw, some of these pictures are from other cities we've done this transition with. What we find, a lot of times, is when we initially propose this, there's a, a huge pushback to going to carts. When, in reality, a lot of time, there's a lot of customers that have basically the carts we use, except they're, they're paying for them out of pocket, right? So, it's typically not as large of a transition as, as we would think. And right now, just driving around over the past month or so, taking a, taking a look at everything, it's about forty or fifty percent of customers have containers that basically meet the, the specs of our containers. So, why add carts? Outside of safety, one of the biggest things is, is staffing is becoming a challenge, right? I kind of mentioned it already, it's getting hard to find people that are willing to stand on the back of the truck in the freezing rain, smoking hot summer. There's, there's a lot of things they can go do for about the same dollar amount per hour, so it's getting harder and harder to convince them and, and eventually, it's going to, it's going to phase itself out just by the fact that we won't be able to get people on the back of the truck. The safety and productivity, this is, safety's, safety's our number one core value as a company, we take it very seriously. This is something that, over the past year, has come to light more for us. We've had multiple life-changing events with employees on the back of trucks and it's, it's becoming an issue more and more every day. We see people every day driving down the road staring at their phone, that's essentially covering up their whole face, right? We've got, we've got guys that are essentially risking their lives on the back of the trucks and, and it's, it's becoming a bigger issue and it's something that we, as a company, are, are looking to handle as soon as possible. Residential capacity and ability to scale. It's much easier for us to scale to the needs of the city, whether it's upsizing, downsizing, whatever it may be, when we're doing it in a carded manner. We control the carts, we order them, basically you guys tell them where we need to take them and we take them and we get everything handled. City aesthetics, this is a big one. There's a, there's a appeal that comes with the carts, right? There's, everything's uniform, everything is maintained. As issues come up with carts, it's not on the resident to replace them, buy a new one, they simply, whether it's a wheel fell off, whether the lid broke off, whether the can cracked in half, right? We can repair certain things and we replace others and it never comes at a cost to the customer. And then litter control, we already kind of spoke about this, there's, I've got it at my house in Colleyville, you've got animals that like to dig into stuff, so this eliminates a lot of that. There's, there's additional attachments we can put on the, on the lids, it's basically gravity locked, there's a lot of routes we can go to ensure that when the, the trash is put in the can, it's staying there. So, what we would like to propose is, obviously we mentioned, this kind of was initiated by the discussions around recycling. And when we take into consideration the safety concerns for, for us as a company, we want to propose moving to automated trash service twice a week with a ninety-five gallon cart, automated recycling service twice a month with a ninety-five gallon cart. And so, basically you're going, you guys have the eighteen gallon bins right now, so you're going from about eighty gallons a month to just under two hundred when you look at it in the, every other week. We will procure all the new trucks, that obviously doesn't come at a cost of the city. The carts, we're taking care of that, we get them ordered, we get them delivered, we put education material on the carts as they get delivered. And then, the bundled brush and bulky item collection will transition to be collected on a weekly basis. So, when you look at it in the grand scheme of things, we're really, it's, it's, it's a hard transition to go from take-all to, to carded. We're, we're aware of that, we've dealt with it with other cities. When you look at it at capacity vantage point, when you, when you do twice a week carded service and a limited bulk and brush pickup every week, it's, we're typically increasing So, these are some comp residential prices, something to note, these are, none of these are our prices. And then, there's obviously listed whether they're carded, the weekly service amount, the weekly, or the, the amount of the bulk and brush pickup and whether they include recycling or not. Some of the similar ones and some of the ones that point out really are outliers, you have Trophy Club and Hazel. Those are newer contracts, those are twice a week take-all. One of them, including a brush service outside of that with a grapple truck, which is what we service you guys with quarterly, and then, one of them having recycle and one of them not. So, that's, that's your typical market right now for the twice a week take-all service with some sort of brush mixed in there. Mineral wells, they're, they're automated twice a week, once a week bulk with no recycling. You have white settlement, once a week service, once a month bulk with recycling. Fort Worth, you have once a week service, once a month with recycling, and then the same with Watauga. So, you can see a good variety of service in the price ranges that go with that. I'm very confident that at the twice a week automated service and once a week bulk service, we're going to be very near the once a week service that you see with white settlement and Watauga. So, what does the transition look like? As I stated, I know this is a, can be sometimes scary to certain residents, we've done this, we have done this.
Can you go back? I mean, it'd been nice if you'd have put the recommendation for Saginaw on there so we could have seen it compared to the others.
Mm-hmm. We're still, we're still working through that right now. I didn't want to put a soft number in there, but like I said, we're going to be right in that, that nineteen range.
That what?
In the nineteen dollar range.
Just everybody remember, we're not taking action on this tonight, this is just a discussion, so.
Yeah, understand, I just, they're throwing numbers and I'm doing a comparison, so.
Transition. Like we said, Crowley, Halton City, we've done this multiple times, we've gotten a good plan together on, on how to transition from the take-all service to the carded, right? So, it'd be a detailed plan coordinated with staff, council, everyone that would like to be involved can be involved, right? The more, the merrier. Timeline for assembly, once we would, if this was approved, it typically takes about four to eight weeks for the amount of carts we'd be looking at, really depending on the manufacturer. Ninety-five gallon containers, something that we can start doing is, instead of having waste connections printed on the side that you can see on that blue recycling container, we can have a, whatever logo you guys would want to represent the City of Saginaw can be stamped on there. And then, once we do roll it out, we've done this, we did this with Crowley and it actually worked out really good. Something we see as a operational headache is, when we transition from take-all to carded, a lot of people think they need more carts than they really do, a lot of people think they're going to need a smaller cart or they think they can handle the big cart, there's a lot of ways it can go. So, what we did with Crowley is, we put a thirty-day waiting period on it to get them adjusted to the, the standard cart and then we allowed them to call us, either get a smaller container, being the sixty-five, adding another ninety-five gallon container, whatever of that sorts. And one of the biggest concerns is, is the containers are going to be too big and too heavy. With Crowley, about seven thousand residents, we transitioned one resident to a sixty-five gallon cart from the ninety-fives.
So, with, if, if somebody wants an additional cart, is there going to be an additional fee for that extra cart?
Yeah, it's significantly discounted compared to the base rate, but yes, there's an additional fee.
Have you any idea what that would be?
Not yet. It's tip-
Sorry. If you need to finish answering, you can't.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, on the once a week bulk though, they could still put out like the black trash bags, extra, with extra trash if they needed to.
Yep.
Because that's been the biggest, I think, reason why you get pushback is, like, right now, I mean, you can put out a lot of bags.
Yeah.
And they'll take it.
Yeah.
So, I think as long as there's still that option, I don't think the pushback will be near as much, because I think people think it's all one or all the other.
Correct, yeah. No, it's, it's, really it's a catch-all term for anything that's not in a cart, is the way we look at it. So, as long as, as long as it's bagged easy for us to pick up, as long as it's not hazardous material, it's, it's going to get picked up.
The other thing I've got is the colors. People are used to green for recycle. Any reason why you went to blue for the recycle?
That's what we've done for however many years as a company.
Just curious, because, you know, people, people are creatures of habit with the green.
That's a good question and I don't have the answer to it, but that's-
What I can say is, we can make the carts the same color and make recycling yellow or, you know, we, there's multiple ways to- I mean, it's not, not a big deal or anything, I'm just, people are creatures of habit.
And then, one more question, maybe you guys will cover this later, but is, has there ever been a thought to having a place for bulk brush where residents could come and dump their own brush so that that kind of takes off the load from, from y'all having to do it?
Yeah, we do it with multiple cities, we kind of leave that up to the city. It, it's dependent on the city, right? If you guys have the space for us to, but roll-offs basically what your appetite for it is, but we do it with multiple cities and yeah, it's definitely something, something we're open to.
One of, one of the complaints I hear from people in Fort Worth is if, if bags sticking up a little bit, Fort Worth won't, they won't pick it up, is that going to be an issue with this or?
To an extent, it happens. It's pretty much a common sense rule, right? The, the fear with that is, when that can gets lifted up and tipped over, if it's, if there's too much hanging above the cart, it's going to get basically thrown over the truck and can hit a parked car, passing car, whatever it may be. We typically say about a forty-five degree rule, but even then, it, it depends on the makeup of the material, but if, no, if you're talking a couple inches-
Fort Worth, if it's, if it's slightly open, they will not pick it up? Fort Worth is tyrants. I mean, I've got friends that live there, they get tickets all, I mean, if it's open that much, they get tickets, yeah.
No, it's, it's got to be pretty severe for, for us to not pick it up. And a lot of times, as long as it's bagged, our guys, you know, as a courtesy, we have tags that we can put on stuff and label what the issue is or something, so a lot of times what they'll do is they'll pull one or two bags off the top, service it, throw those bags back in the cart, service it, and then they'll tag it. That way, the customer knows, hey, don't fill it up as much as you did, right? To the point that you filled it up this time, it was an issue, we took care of it and then we'll kind of handle it that way. But no, you're talking, I've heard the stories too, it's, it's, it's not going to be a Fort Worth scenario.
So, I know I'm not the only one with this problem, but we keep two cars in our garage and then other people just, their garages are just full of stuff. And we find it difficult already to have room for the container we do have, so these are much larger. So, could you have a smaller one instead of the bigger one and it could still work with the automated?
Yep.
System? And then the recycle bin, you know, we don't, we don't need one that big, so are there smaller recycle bins?
Yep. We can go down to sixty-five gallon on both of them.
Okay, so that, and then, would you pick up recycling twice a week or once a week?
Recycling, we were proposing that it would be every other week.
Every other week?
So, it would be twice a month, yeah. Just because of the, the-
Because it is bigger.
The capacity increase, yeah.
But then, the smaller one, if you, if you knew you wouldn't overfill it, you could still have a smaller one.
Even at the smaller one, you're still looking at an additional forty-five gallons of service, so basically, two of your bins, I think, that you would get at the every other week level.
And then, talking about, you wouldn't have any employees riding along the outside of the truck, or would you?
Not on the truck that would be servicing the carts, it's a driver alone, but on the, the truck that would be servicing the bulk and brush, that we would still have employees.
You would have.
Yep.
So, would there be any kind of a program? I know you said it was hard to get people to, to take those jobs, but if at the time of transition, if you do transition and there are still people working for you as the helpers, would you have any kind of a program to help them find employment elsewhere?
Absolutely. Honestly, the, the ideal situation is that they stay employed with us. About two years ago, we built a CDL school in Gastonia, North Carolina, and then about a year ago, we actually put another one in, in Houston, which is where our corporate headquarters is. Starting about six months ago, we've had a big push, it kind of started with more interest from the, the helper level, that we send them down, pay for their CDL, obviously their schooling, and then they come back, have a guaranteed job, they work for us. So, through natural attrition that I kind of spoke of already, we would get down to a manageable number to where we would be able to send those guys to the CDL school and get them their licenses and honestly, it, it completely changes their life, right? They go from throwing trash on the back of a truck to having a, being a professional So, each resident, initially we would receive one green cart, one blue cart, or trash and recycle, whatever, whatever color we settle on. And then obviously, like I said, we, we typically, we're, we're moving towards that thirty-day waiting period because there is a lot of transition, it's, it's hard to drop a can off, take two more out the next week and then a month later, the customer's paying for three carts and they realize, I don't need them, and then we got to go back out, pick them up. So, we saw good, you know, pretty big success with that waiting period. But after that, obviously, like I said, you can go to the smaller carts, you can get more, we'll, we'll give the residents what they need. So, this is a, a sheet from our cart vendor, just kind of showing a little bit of the specs. I'm sure most of you guys are familiar with what the, the ninety-five gallon carts look like. Something to note, I think, is a big misconception between what a lot of residents view as the cart is, they're picturing the ones that are at Home Depot, unless they've had a, you know, industrial branded cart before, they're a lot heavier. They're anywhere from, you know, six to ten pounds heavier than the ones we use, they're costly, they're, I don't know how stores get away with charging what they charge for carts. So, I understand the, the, I guess intimidation by going carded, right? It's, it's a lot more manageable than it's made to seem.
So, on these carts, does these, would the citizens buy the carts or would you all furnish one cart?
We furnish one.
If you go back, it said it had a ten-year warranty, so.
That's, that's just applicable to us.
Okay.
This is, this is the sheet that they'll send us every year with updates if they're changing the carts and stuff, so there's no warranty that they need to worry about, there's no upfront cost, there's no cost ever associated with a cart to the resident. We pay for them upfront, all they have to do, if they break, gets lost, gets stolen, whatever it is, they call us, tell us what they need, we'll fix it if we can, if we can't, we'll bring a new one out.
Okay, thank you.
So, what are the, some of the, some of the value-added benefits? Operationally for us, safety's the biggest one, right? I kind of spoke about what, what is leading us in this direction. It's something we take very seriously and it's, it's getting to a point where this is the direction we're going to go as a company, this is the direction the, the industry is going. I think there's a reason that, that us, Republic and Waste Management are going this direction. And a lot of it is to do with, with safety. With the tariffs and just the economy on itself, everything has gone up, right? We've seen since 2021, there's been a forty percent increase in the capital costs related to trash service. We're at a point right now where we've already, we've already secured our pricing for 2026. So, we're able to do it at a, at a rate that is significantly discounted to what a smaller company would, right? That's one of the benefits for us is, we're, we're nationwide, we're in Canada, we have great vendors that we spend a boatload of money with and they reward us for it and we in turn get to help the cities out with that pricing. We have a ten-year team. I've been here, I've been with the company for five years, Abel's been fifteen years. We have a lot of people that have been there for a long time, right? We have, we have experience with servicing residential areas that have a great mix of commercial and industrial. We have, we have experience with servicing residential areas that have a great mix of commercial and industrial. And it's something that we can focus on the commercial and industrial more as that grows in Saginaw with, with this transition to carts. Planning for the future, talked about the capital, right? It's, this is the direction the industry's going. We're able to do it at a point right now where it's not necessarily the industry standard, and so we're not handcuffed by industry pricing. Commitment to education on service enhancements, this is a big one. I've mentioned it already. But one of the big things we've done in, in cities with the past transitions is speaking to the senior centers. We go do events there, whatever it may be, we can bring food. There's a, there's a lot of ways we can do it. That's a big concern for a lot of cities, and that's something we've, we've practiced and we're, we're happy to do. Company structure, obviously, we're, we're a Texas company, we're a publicly traded company. But we get to operate on a decentralized model, and that allows us to, myself, Abel, my controller, Darcy, to operate our business as, as we see fit in the market that is directly affected by us. And this is a, a representation of our company operating values, right? Safety and integrity being number one and two. Safety is paramount. The biggest goal for us is to send guys home the same way they came to work. And frankly, with the, with the rearload services, it's getting harder and harder to do every day. With that, you guys have any more questions?
I have just a comment. I definitely want to see something with the recycles because I'm tired of all the trash blowing around. You know, we got our containers, they have lids, but, you know, the lids would get blow down the road and everything, and it's, you can tell when it's trash day on the streets. And then, just clean it up, and I'd love to see the cans with the city logo on them. I wouldn't have a problem with people leaving them outside their house if that's what they had.
Yeah. Yeah. A good presentation, but devil's in the details. I need to see, I need to see numbers, you know, I need to see. Like, to me, the bigger, the longer I can, to me, the longer I can sign the contract, the better. Five, ten-year contract, that, to me, that's, that's the way I'd, I'd like to quit this every other year, every three-year stuff. Get a, get a lock solid one down.
Absolutely.
But again, devil's in the details, what's, what's it going to cost? I can tell you that allowing a private business to find our citizens is going to be a very hard pill for someone like me to swallow.
It's an option.
Other questions for Zach and Abel?
When do you think you can come back with a more detailed plan of, for your information?
I should have hard pricing in the next week or so.
As I said, this is the, the first of discussions. I anticipate more discussions on this. Let's, we're at the end of the year, maybe we can see y'all again in Q1 next year to get to talk hard, more specific numbers and things. Would that be reasonable?
Yeah, absolutely.
When's our region, when's our contract up? This is next, into next year?
November.
This month?
November twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, so one year from now.
Yeah, a year from now.
So we're starting it plenty ahead of time, talking about this.
Yeah, that's good.
So yeah, so let's, let's tentatively come back sometime, Q1 next year, we'll see some more.
Yeah.
That sound good to everybody? All right. Gentlemen, thank y'all for coming. Appreciate the info.
Thank you.
More to come. All right, moving on, public hearing. So four A and four B were presented at P&amp;Z and withdrawn, and that was approved. But I wanted Maria to give just a quick, quick brief on that and sort of an update on what happened.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a rezoning request from Falcon. They are the property owner at one twelve Spring Hollow Drive. So this rezoning came about from their plan. So they originally had planned to have their driveway off of Spring Hollow Drive. And after discussion with the neighborhood and staff, they took the initiative to change that over to McElroy. But to do so, they would need to own land off of McElroy. And so they reached out to the neighbor, neighboring property. And they, after discussion, they agreed on doing a land swap that would allow them to own a portion off of McElroy. And it would also allow them to gift portions of their property to the neighborhood and the HOA at Spring Hollow. So this rezoning would accommodate for that land swap. It would allow them to rezone the portions that they're gifting to the HOA to be single-family and align with the residential area. And it would also allow them to take the portion that is currently high industrial to be, or, I'm sorry, community commercial and would now align to their use, which would be heavy and light industrial. But with that being said, they also, in their discussion with the HOA and the neighborhood, they agreed to no longer build the screening fence that is required by our ordinance. And they had reached out to the building department to start the process to apply for a variance. However, previously, they went before the BOA, and they had a prior ruling that denied them to not build that screening fence. And so after a discussion with staff, we believed and we recommended for the item to be withdrawn from Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council to allow them to come back with a PD that would combine the rezoning that you see today and the screening fence to be removed from their project. So at that time, y'all would have the opportunity to discuss this a little bit more in detail with the applicant. But today, that, that was the, the reason for the rezoning to be withdrawn. At our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on November eleventh, we also let the commission know of this, and they recommended the approval of the withdrawal of this item and the following item. And so today, that is what we have before y'all. Do y'all have any questions? Yes.
So I'm confused about the screening fence.
Yes, ma'am.
The reason they did not want to build the screening fence, was that because it would impede their ability to use the drive?
No, ma'am. So I believe they stated that it was a financial burden to build the fence and additionally provide amenities to the HOA in the residential areas.
So does the neighborhood want the screening fence?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So they are in discussion with the HOA in the neighborhood, and they are also in agreement. They were in favor of the rezoning, and I believe they are now also in discussion for this PD.
There's an existing burn there now, which basically takes place at the fence.
And it's only a portion of the fence. It's a small portion. The majority of it is still being built.
So it, it is my understanding that the HOA is okay with not having that fence?
Yes, yes, sir.
I, I had one more question, just for clarification. It was confusing at the P&amp;Z.
Can I just clarify that point really quick? They are currently proposing for all of the screening fence along all the entire residential to be deviated from. But that request will come as a PD package before y'all, and then y'all can amend if, if needed.
So just so, because there was a lot of confusion at the P&amp;Z on the, one part it says here on four A, at the very end it says, change from community commercial to light industrial and heavy industrial. And everybody got locked up on the heavy industrial, so I'll just point my cast. Is this, they, they were worried about the company, I forget the name of the company.
Star Manufacturing.
Yeah. Which one?
Star Manufacturing. They are the adjacent property.
They were worried about them moving their manufacturing, some very loud machines over closer to the housing. And do we have insurances that that won't happen?
Yes, so the portion that they are receiving from Falcon is directly behind their property, so it is not near-
Do you have a picture that you can show us? Do you have a-
It is within your packet.
But yeah, let's remember, we're not discussing that tonight, so let's, let's not get too much in the weeds. We are just really, I just want her to give a, a quick background of where we are. We will get this again. We just need to tonight approve the withdrawal to make sure you're okay with that. And then it'll come back around to P&amp;Z and to us later. So we can't, we don't need to get into the details tonight, and I fear Bryn can, can, that we shouldn't get into too many details tonight. Can you sort of give us an, I don't know, just fill in?
It's, it's on the agenda, and so you can either go the, the route of opening the public hearing, littering the item, voting, tabling it. But what they really want to do is withdraw and, and provide the appropriate application to you that can address everything. And then that, that certainly, well, that'll go through P&amp;Z and come back to City Council.
Okay. So we don't need to open the, the public hearing for any of this?
No.
I just didn't want to discuss too much when we're not in a public hearing. That was my big concern.
That's, that's correct. And the only reason it's on the agenda is because staff consulted with me, and my advice is, once an application is filed, it's the city's decision whether or not to take action on it or whether to approve the withdrawal. So this is a request for a withdrawal, and we could have just said, well, then it's withdrawn. But I, I, my advice is, when these come up, you should vote on it.
Okay, just for the withdrawal.
Well, and just for clarification for me, the only reason I'm asking these questions is because it's going to come back before us. And if I can resolve the questions now, I don't have to write them down and try to remember to ask them again in a month. But that's, that was my only thing. But I can wait a month. I'll, I'll keep my notes.
And just, just, I watched the planning and zoning, and I think they were confused. The one gentleman, I think, thought that the warehouse was going to turn into a heavy, heavy-
Yep.
-industrial. And, and as long as they have some clarification on that, I think we're fine. But they, it was very confusing.
Yes.
I think the city could have done a better job of explaining it.
Yes, sir. And we did discuss this item with him before the meeting and after the meeting. And since then, we've received a couple letters from this gentleman. And he had just clarified that he had spoken to the HOA president and was aware that they are in favor of the rezoning and that they weren't going to be located directly behind his property.
Okay, any other questions for Maria on this? And I appreciate, thank you for coming, and you and Suzie giving us a, an update on this very complex issue. So if there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the withdrawal.
Parental motion, withdraw, use dealer withdrawal as present.
Okay. Bracken second that? Okay. Is that a good enough motion, Bryn? Is that fair?
It is. And just for the record, that's, that's for both items.
Both items, yes.
So this is, this motion is for A and B, for A and B.
We're doing A right now at the moment, and then I'll click on item B.
So I can't make a motion for both of them?
Legally, you can.
I just need to record it.
Bryn said legally we can, so what's the, what's the problem?
Yeah, I, I don't want to, I'm sorry, I don't want to make things difficult for you either. But legally, you can, and you don't have to even vote electronically.
Well, we just voted.
Okay.
Motion, motion approved. Council approves withdrawal. Everybody good? Thank you, thank you, folks. Okay. Four C, Consideration Action Regarding, well, first of all, at six forty-three, we're in a public hearing. Consideration Action Regarding a Proposal Textural, Proposed Textural Agreement Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance Regarding Modifying the City's Permitted Use Table. Suzie Victor Trivino, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So before you, you have a textual amendment to amend the permitted use table. The planning and zoning team utilizes the permitted use table to identify what is and what is not allowed and where it is and where is not allowed. Typically, in urban planning, it's common practice to update permitted use table and any zoning and subdivision ordinances and codes. So that way, we have updated material, right? Because what we were fifty years ago is not what we are today. Within the timeframe that I have been here, within the six years, I don't believe we've had a master permitted table update. So I'm not sure when the last time was, but it was some time ago. Today, we have separated the textual amendments for the table in sections. So today, before you, you have automobile uses, commercial, retail, and service, and medical. And then in the future, you will be seeing different categories. Okay, so I've gone ahead and separated the automobile in subcategories because it is a very long section. So the first section is going to be vehicle sales, which consists of auto auctions, motorcycle sales, and auto sales, new and used. The P&amp;Z team is proposing to propose that all of these uses are not permissible within the community. And that was based off of the fact that a lot of these uses, like motorcycle sales, are not in dire need for the city. We have a lot of them nearby, within reach. And they're not necessarily something that in limited parcels that we have are in the priority list. So that's just what we would recommend in order to utilize our existing land to our full potential. With that, I'm going to, after each category, I'm just going to ask y'all if y'all have any questions. And that way, we take notes properly on anything that y'all want changed or need clarification on. Nope, no, no questions on that one. Okay. So with that, I'll move to the next section, which is auto rentals. Auto rentals are something that can be very beneficial to a city, but the location is very critical. We don't want to have an excessive auto rental location right by residential areas, right? Something that this kind of usage allows for and is concerning can be safety, noise, and just storage issues. So for NC and for, yeah, for NC, for the auto rentals, car and truck, we're proposing to not allow it at all. Neighborhood commercial in the city of Saginaw is currently located all within the residential areas where it would really affect that. For community commercial, we're proposing to have it allowed within SUP. And that way, the P&amp;Z and City Council can vote on it on a case-by-case basis. Because again, location is very important, and having the ability to allow y'all to vote on that on compatibility is very important. Whereas if you just allow it by right, you're never going to see it before you. It's just automatically voted upon. Yes, sir.
What about existing businesses, once they fall under a special use?
That's a great question. So there is a legal term that is legal non-conforming usage. So any business that currently is allowed by the right, by SUP or by right within the permitted use table, apologies, they would be grandfathered. That's not a legal reward, right? It would be legal non-conforming, but they're basically allowed to continue that use. And if someone applies for a CO after them with the same use, they're also able to have that. It would just be changed if they changed that usage. So if today, they're an auto rental, and tomorrow, they're a barber shop, and then want to go back to an auto rental after, it's no longer a legal non-conforming use, and then they would have to apply through the SUP or not be permissible, whatever is approved today.
But, but if they sold their business to somebody else, you continue to, that would be fine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The second half of that would be RV rentals. RVs are typically not something that we really see a lot of in Saginaw. And again, usage is very much dependent on city on a case-by-case basis. So for this, we are proposing to not allow them within CC and industrial, so all throughout the city. Any questions on that one? Okay. So for our next one, we have storage, and this would just be in regards to RV storage. Again, that kind of goes based off the previous of the fact that RVs are not really a pressing issue. If you just have a big storage for all RVs, one, they're really big, so it's going to be hard to hide that fact, right? That may cause other issues like security issues and people breaking in. So we would just recommend not allowing them. Any questions on that section? Our next one is auto services, auto part sales, and auto garages, which of course are a great benefit to any city, but again, it's dependent on compatibility. So that's something that you're really going to see trending on all of this. The first one, being at Car Wash, in neighborhood commercial, we would propose to not have that permitted. Because again, neighborhood commercial, right by the residential areas, I don't think that that's something that residents want to wake up to every day necessarily. For community commercial, for P&amp;Z, we were proposing to not have it permitted. However, there was a lot of apprehension, and they didn't necessarily vote to change it. But I think as staff, when we discussed this, we would just- But I think as staff, when we discussed this, we would just go ahead and keep it as is. So it would be permissible through an SUP and that way, it's not allowed by right anywhere. For LI and HI, that can get complicated, right? Because we may have an industry such as Fuel City that has that car wash integrated. So again, that would be on a case-by-case basis. So we would recommend keeping that as an SUP instead of by right, so we don't just have car washes everywhere. With that, we also have auto parts and accessory sales, auto repair garages, auto service stations, and auto service stations light maintenance. For all of the neighborhood commercials, we're proposing to change that to not permissible. Again, going with, it's not very compatible with where we currently have NC. For community commercial sections of these categories, we're proposing to change it from right to SCP. So that way, y'all can review that on a case-by-case basis. These are still permitted in the industrial areas, so I do just want to make that clear. So within your packet, you have changes outlined in red and current usages that are being kept in black. So I do want to let them, y'all just know that, that is still being proposed to be kept in the industrial section. So with that, opening it in case y'all have any questions or concerns or any requests to change anything. Our next one is transportation centers. City of Saginaw, and it's not a very large community, where we need a bus and train and taxi station, especially not within the neighborhood commercial or the neighborhood mixed-use zones. I do want to point out that we kept it permissible in light industrial and heavy industrial. But if y'all wanted to change that, we're opening that up to y'all to decide on. But right now, we're just proposing to change it from not permissible in NC, I don't know Our next categories are parking lots. I think we can all agree, we don't want random parking lots everywhere throughout the city. We want purposeful development. For park and ride lots, we're proposing to not have them allowed anywhere in the city except for in city facilities. This is because we, this past year, we did have train grain at Willow Creek Park and we did use a park and ride shuttle system where people could park in a parking lot and be shuttled to their final destination. So this is really essential to future events. So we are proposing to keep that within city facility. And for parking lots, auto and truck, we are requesting for them to only be permitted with an SCP in the industrial zones and not be permissible in city, in community commercial.
So if I read this right, then it wouldn't be allowed. Park and ride is not allowed anywhere in the city.
Except for city facilities, for park and ride lots. For parking...
Except for what?
For park and ride lots, it would only be permissible in city facility, which is that shuttle system.
Where does it state that out? See, add definite residential PO, I don't know what all these are, amendments permitted with specific use to not permit it. And then the next one is CCL, LI and HI amended from permitted by right to not permitted. Both of them are not permitted.
Yes, but if you take a look at the permitted use table, it's already under city facility as an S. So that's not anything that's changing. So it's already currently allowed by SUP in city facilities.
So the city can do park and ride, but no one else?
That's what we're proposing. Yes.
Sounds fair.
We currently don't see a need for these establishments where you have to have a parking lot to be shuttled to a different business. So that was just our background on that. Again, for parking lots, commercial, auto and truck, we're requesting for CC not to be permitted, but LI and HI would be allowed through an SUP. Parking lot off-premises, that's a very important one. If you remember, for the last recent meetings we've had in regards to the Saginaw local favorite development, off-premise parking is something that has been brought up. And in addition, you have a letter of support from DFW Plastics. They're also a development in the community that is wanting to expand and have a multimillion-dollar redevelopment. With that, they're really constructing on land and so they're wanting to see if they can have off-premise parking so that they can make that achievable. So we do have an ordinance referenced as 2023-17 that prohibits on-premise parking, but the permitted use table for that was never amended. So what we're proposing for that one is to keep all of the residential uses as not permissible. But for community commercial, city facility, light industrial, and heavy industrial zones, applicants would be allowed to apply with an SUP to have off-premise parking. And so with that, that ordinance would have a stipulation, just letting applicants know that it, they would be allowed to apply for any deviation through an SUP that would be, have to be approved through the formal process. So with that, do y'all have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I, I do. Okay, Fire Station One. We, we know that the city has a parking problem there already.
Yes, sir.
So if we approve this, item four, would that stop them from entering into a contractual agreement, say with the adjacent business to use part of their parking?
No, that would help them. So by opening that up to be eligible through an SUP, they would have the opportunity to come before y'all, apply for an SUP. And the great thing about SCPs is that y'all can have stipulations. So if you wanted to put that, the parking lot had to be, if ever sold in the future, it had to be sold off with that parcel, if they owned a different parcel. Or in this instance, they would obviously have to have some sort of parking agreement if they wanted to share somebody else's parking under a different ownership. So it would open up a lot of possibilities for them.
Okay, so I guess I'm, I'm confused because A says we're moving it from specific use to not permitted and then ordinance 2023-17 says it was adopted to enforce on-premise parking, but the table was never updated. So if we just leave it as the table as it is now, then there's no change.
So A is only in reference to office professional, neighborhood, commercial, and NMU.
Okay.
The current use table for CCCF, LI, and HI, that's being proposed to allow through an SUP. So for instance, the local favorite is in a community commercial zoning. So if we amend this to have them be able to apply in an SCP, then they would be eligible.
Does it fall under A or B?
It's currently as-is, so that's not a change.
Currently under what?
It's currently as-is in the permitted use table.
It, it's B. It's community commercial. It's CC.
Okay, thank you.
So it's CC. It's, we rezoned it to CC. It was community facility. It was a city, probably, we rezoned it to CC.
I just tried to, so if we don't do anything to this one, it's, it's okay now because the table was never updated, right?
Yes. However, the only problem if we don't decide to do anything is that that would be allowed in neighborhood mixed-use OP and NC. And after speaking with the fire department, we definitely don't want to open that up to just everybody, especially the residential areas. So that's why we were proposing to not have that open in there and only have that within community commercial, city facility, LI and HI. Because I think that's the only people that would really need them in the future, but...
And the big thing on that one on B is we're amending that ordinance as well. That needed to be updated too. That, that's the one that's stopping them right now from doing that.
Yes. So everything that's on this slide is just things that are being proposed because that never got updated. It's existing, so that's why it's not on there as a letter technically. Any other questions, yes, sir?
Brack?
Can maybe the fire department go a little bit more into why not on office professional, neighborhood commercial, and neighborhood mixed-use?
It's not necessarily the fire department's, more building and overall ordinance. And it's really towards the multifamily use to make sure, that's what it stemmed from primarily, to make sure that apartments were providing adequate, or multifamily buildings were providing adequate space for all their residents. Because we've had that problem in the past and we had, didn't have a tool to enforce that. So the office professional, I can't speak to. I think, I think that's just another one. We want to make sure they have adequate parking at their facility and they're not parking in the, in the roadway.
Okay, thank you.
My biggest, well, not my biggest, but one of the concerns I have on this and also too is this company who's wanting to bring in a lot, lot more jobs and stuff, now they're, they're hindered and we're inflicting pain on them to build more parking, which will benefit the city and the citizens really from attack space. And I just, I, I struggle with this. I want to make absolutely sure that we give them as much freedom as we can.
Well, I think that's what, that's what the ordinance is doing. It's providing the mechanism to allow that parking in those type facilities. Yes.
Yeah.
That's the whole intent.
The existing regulation is preventing them. I might add too, that this is common to update your use charts, but as we're built out and we see more redevelopment, you get rid of uses that are not practical. So I'm making this up. I've got to take a trip to West Texas, but Andrews, Texas, Brack would know, he's a good Lubbock boy, they have a nuclear waste disposal facility. Do we need a nuclear waste disposal facility in Saginaw? Probably not. I don't think that we would ever need. But we do need to clean up our use charts so that it's competitive with the market and to the point, when we get these redevelopment projects, we want to be flexible as these properties expand or change into other uses. So this would affect the DFW Plastics, the fire station. We've had some discussions about a retailer on the Boulevard expanding and they have some parking issues. So this fixes them for them.
Yes. If y'all wanted to keep that open to OP and NC, y'all are more than welcome to. We just don't see, because those are typically smaller businesses in general, we just don't see that. But with the NMU, that would be where the multifamily component would come in and that was what was advisable through the fire department. Just want to clarify that for sure.
I think, I think we're happy with it as is. We just need, we just need a clarification.
Any questions in regards to any of the other ones?
The other, um, the pack that you had hinted at was Scott, a thing out here changed to medical. We didn't talk anything about medical.
Yes, that is an upcoming slide.
Okay. I thought you were done.
No, just for this slide.
So I know that you probably did all this for the sake of efficiency, but if we needed to, could we break this up and like table some? Because I would like to see the zoning map and see what businesses would be then legal non-conforming, because it will affect them at some point in the future. So that's just, you know, I would like to see that. So I don't know if that's something that we can do. Can we split it up?
Yeah, well, actually, I'd like, I, I need to visit with Suzie about this item. I have, I have a legal concern about it. And so if, if we could actually table the entire item, that'll give you all the opportunity to study things and give me the opportunity.
Do you mean just the automobile one or this whole packet?
The, the whole packet.
Whole kit and caboodle, as it were?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, I got with Bessie, but...
That was, that was going to be my recommendation at the end anyway, so I'm, I'm all happy.
Keep going.
Any other questions with this section?
No, I think we're good. Keep going.
Okay. Okay, so that finishes the automobile section. Next, I'm gonna hand it out to Ms. Peña and she is gonna discuss the commercial, retail, and service.
So going into this section, the first change that we're proposing is within the convenience stores with or without fuel cells or, hey, gas stations. And the neighborhood commercial zoning to amend that by permitted, by right to not permitted. And in the commercial, community commercial, amend that from permitted by right to permitted with a specific use permit. Main reasoning being the placement of our current zones of neighborhood commercial. It makes it very difficult to add gas stations that wouldn't negatively impact traffic flow because of their proximity to residential areas. But we do want to keep the, sorry. We do want to keep the option open for the community commercial to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. Another feedback that we've gotten is the amount of gas stations currently available at the city of Saginaw, where having these being reviewed on a case-by-case basis would allow us to not have them just all come in and perhaps put more stipulations or conditions into those, into those developments.
Would there be a way to break that out to convenience stores with fuel sales, sales, and convenience stores without as separate? Because my feeling is, is that a convenience store with no fuel cells is the definition of a mom-and-pop shop. And I don't, I don't know that I'd be comfortable with restricting it. I, I understand the fuel side, but I, if somebody wants to open a little...
Like a bodega almost, right?
Yeah, just a, a little shop. I, I don't want this, because it's a convenience store. I don't want it to be not permitted in neighborhood commercial, because I, I think it does fit with the zoning.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up. That was something brought up on our P&amp;Z meeting as well. Bessie, our attorney during that meeting, did note that currently within our ordinance, the definition for convenience store with or without fuel cells grips it together in the way that the convenience store is more so an accessory to the gas station. But as we're amending the permitted use table by sections, when we go on to the commercial side, we will bring an intended definition for just convenient shops that are more geared to what you're bringing up there. Because that's definitely not what we're proposing. And this change wouldn't affect or prevent smaller businesses or mom-and-pop shops from opening in that, in those residential areas. But thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to clarify, we would hint, probably would say we don't want gas stations. I mean, right now, where I live in Saginaw, I buy 98% of all my gas in Fort Worth because we don't have a gas station over there.
You don't go to Fuel City or QT?
I don't drive all the way back over here. I don't cross that railroad track.
You don't have to go to Fuel City. It's right down the road from you, brother. QT, Fuel City?
And the community commercial would remain permitted through a specific use permit. So that would allow you to have applicants bring it forward to you and review it on a case-by-case basis. So it wouldn't be completely eliminated, but again, it's majorly the concern with the proximity to the residential areas.
Yes, I guess I'm trying, and that's something where this is going to be tabled, but I, I'll, I'll ask to meet with y'all to get, because this, this is my weakness, these, these, all this zoning, I'll tell you right now. And what I'm trying to, as I'm sitting there and I'm looking at Blue Mound and I'm looking at Bailey Boswell and I'm like, boy, I don't see a problem with putting a gas station somewhere down through there. We currently don't have one, so...
I would need to be...
And would that, could we do that still?
Yeah, you could and it's likely, so right now, Randy just stepped out, but we've got pre-development plans on a gas station in the corner of Bailey Boswell and Blue Mound. There's talks of one further to the west. The rationale is that the council has more control through the SCP process. When something's allowed by right, it's coming in. So it gives the council more control on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I have no problem with the SCP. I think what I got a problem with is the not permitted period.
And I think that's what I was going to recommend was that whenever this comes back, I mean, maybe we make non, the neighborhood commercial an S and then community commercial S and that way we have the ability to, to look at it.
So the, the good news is in neighborhood commercial, there's, there's relatively few parcels left that are neighborhood commercial. And the sensitivity is because they're adjacent to people's homes. So of course you want more likely restrictions and controls as opposed to say, you know, a 7-Eleven on the corner of Old Decatur and Bailey Boswell. That's a commercial area. Bailey Boswell's commercial, Saginaw Boulevard is certainly commercial. We, we don't have to worry about noise, light in the same way that we would in neighborhood commercial parcel. But like I say, I think we're down to a handful of neighborhood commercial parcels that are under development, so.
Yeah, and we need to keep in mind neighborhood mixed-use as well. I certainly don't want to start mixing up those with gas stations. I think that's one we really need to be cognizant of. That's a newer one for us and we, we've done a few of those, targeted those around town. So let's keep that separate. I would, I would want to say no to neighborhood mixed-use absolutely because of how we want to keep that more hometown, walkable kind of thing as opposed... that more hometown, walkable kind of thing, as opposed, but community commercial is a whole different ballgame.
Well, but again, having it where it's, I think it still needs to be an S and not not permitted at all, because even in the neighborhood mixed-use, the way that the language is, it's with or without fuel cells, and you might have a neighborhood mixed-use convenience store like a bodega.
I'd love to break that apart.
Right.
I think that would be best, break those two, have two separate.
Yeah, 'cause if we did that, then, you know, fuel cells, not permitted, but...
I think we should break those apart, absolutely. Because the bodega, like I said, is absolutely great for neighborhoods.
In time.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I really don't think a gas station, filling station, wants to locate in a neighborhood commercial area. They want to be on a major intersection. So I don't even think you would get a request to put one in neighborhood commercial.
The other thing we probably need to look at is electric vehicle charging stations and how we work this, because it's become more and more prevalent, because it's technically not a fuel sale, but...
Right, our current definition doesn't include it, but like we said, we, that would be a definition that would need to be either updated, or whenever we move into the amendment of the commercial area, to have a convenience store just as a dedicated and separately-defined use from what we're covering today. Any further questions, comments? And the next part of changes within that commercial category, or retail category, is reclassifying uses to the medical section. The uses that would be needing to be reclassified would be ambulance service, cosmetic tattoo establishment, massage therapy establishment, and pharmacy. Some of them, some of them are a little bit more self-explanatory, like the ambulance service. The cosmetic tattoo establishment and massage therapy establishment do have some services that fall under the traditionally-defined medical uses, hence it would be more fitting to have them within that category. And we're about to go into the next slide as to some changes that would be happening within those uses as well, within the medical category. Any questions? Okay. So medical covering all of these uses within the community commercial zoning, so to abide to state legislature that determines that either all of these uses have to be permitted by right or through a specific use permit, we're proposing to amend that permitted use table to have consistent requirements for all, to have them all through a specific use permit that would allow, again, to these, for these applications to be brought forward to PNC Commission and to y'all, to add stipulations if needed, and to approve on a case-by-case Do we have any questions regarding those proposals? Okay. And that is the end of our list of proposed amendments. As of right now, to the permitted use table.
Any questions for Luis or Susie? All right, so we're talking about tabling this, do we have a timeframe for tabling, or should we just table indefinitely? What is the...
If we could table it indefinitely, I just have some logistical issues, and we'll work with Susie.
Okay. I will entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I move that we table this indefinitely.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Thank y'all, folks, we will see this again. All right, so moving on, we are, there's no executive session required, thankfully, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, make motion, we adjourn.
Let's say Brack, Valerie Second. Motion passes, so at 7:14, we're adjourned. Thank y'all.